Call the President and Board of Trustees to order roll call.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rasch. Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Bryce for the pledge.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and committee of the whole workshop held on August 18th. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you that motion carries presidential comments.
I just have one. I participated in a fundraiser out at Katie O'Connor's the other day for Rib Fest, if you will. And anyway, it went towards the burn victims. And I thought it was very worthwhile. And they were also joined by the fire department and a member from the school district. So, very worthwhile. That's all.
Trustees' comments? This would be the time for public comments on items not on the agenda, not to exceed three to five minutes per topic. If there are no public comments, then I'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is complete street.
Yes, thank you. You have in your packet a memo from staff. As you know, for the past number of months, staff has been working with TESCA Associates and Public Works on a complete street plan. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mike Hoffman from TESCA Associates, who has prepared a PowerPoint presentation. He'd like to provide on the village board with an update of where we are as part of that plan, as part and parcel of the village's strategic plan. We've had basically extensive staff meetings with traffic committee and a fair amount of basically public outreach, getting input for those residents who live along Meadow Lane. As you know, Meadow Lane is one of the critical components of our complete street policy. So, Mr. Hoffman will discuss that this evening. And also, some of our, perhaps, our complete street policies as it relates to our downtown. So with that, I will basically provide a turn over the mic.
As soon as my, there we go. There we go. All right. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about complete streets. For those that aren't familiar with them, complete streets are really looking at our roadways in the community and looking at ways that we can make them friendly for not only autos, but for pedestrians, for bicycles, and to accommodate transit better. And really, for users of all ages and characteristics, so the young, the old, and the middle age like me. The benefits of having a policy like this are many. They can increase the capacity of roads, increase the safety of roadways, certainly can help improve the health of the community by providing better opportunities to walk and bike through the community from an economic perspective. There's statistics out there that suggest that the more walkable your community is, the higher your home values are and the property values are in the community, actually. So, that can have an economic benefit. If you look at some of the stuff that's going on in Chicago right now, actually, with the improved bike access, a lot of the corporations are asking for that type of facility. And Plainfield's been doing that all along with developing a bike trail system. So, it's certainly going to be some clear economic benefits, as well as the environmental benefits of improving transportation in the community and reducing emissions and reducing costs of time spent in vehicles and such. So, lots of benefits. As you remember, we, along with Bexton Women, developed a transportation plan for Plainfield that was completed last year. And it did go beyond the auto and looked at pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And one of the recommendations of that was actually to come back and do a complete streets policy. Plainfield has already been doing a lot of the elements of a complete street policy just by common practice, I guess, if you will. So, we thought it made sense to go ahead and adopt a formal policy so that we would be on board with that and make sure that all future roadways in the community are designed as complete streets. Our assignment was really threefold. One, to develop a written policy, and it's actually fairly simple and short. But two, to look specifically at ways we could implement this policy in two areas of town, one along Meadow Lane and the other in the downtown area. And honestly, most of the effort's been focused on Meadow Lane, I would say. And we'll talk about that in a second. But those are the three components that we've been looking at. I will say upfront that unlike some complete streets policies, Plains Fields is probably a little bit less focused on transit than some other ones, simply because we don't have much transit in the community. We've got the wonderful pace service going downtown, but we don't have bus service throughout the rest of the community. So, spending a lot of time on that didn't make sense. It's probably not likely, in talking to Pace, that we'll have a lot of additional bus service, given the density and the character of the community that we've proposed. So, we haven't spent much time focusing on that element of complete streets, but we've spent most of our effort looking at ways to make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists and vehicles and trucks and such. Michael mentioned, but we certainly wanted to make sure that we had public input in this process. We did essentially three elements to make sure that we had public input in this process. We set up a booth on a cruise night and talked to people as they were walking the streets and talked to them about issues relating to biking and traveling throughout the community. Michael has put out requests on the village's website and newsletters and has gotten a fair amount of feedback through that process, much of which actually was very consistent with some of the input that we got when we were doing the transportation plan. And I'll talk about some of those in a second. And then we had a meeting with residents along Meadow Lane in July, right here at Village Hall, and got a pretty good turnout of around 30 residents up and down the corridor, though probably heaviest from the southern end of the corridor, with thoughts and ideas of strongly supporting the idea of doing some type of traffic calming measures along Meadow Lane to improve safety for pedestrians and bicyclists in the corridor. Regarding complete streets policies, I hit some of this previously with you, but just real quick for people in the audience or maybe at home. There are about 200 communities across the nation that have complete streets policies right now. Some of the ones in this area, bigger government, state of Illinois, surrounding counties, DuPage and Cook County have them, and then communities like Lamont, Timely Park, Hoffman Estates, this Plains, Highland Park. So, quite a number of communities in the region, but certainly not the majority yet, I don't think. But they're growing every year. And I think, given Plainfield's history of looking at innovative things like safety tables and traffic circles and those kind of elements, it's a good fit for this community. The policy that we've developed in draft form has about five or six different key components. One just talks about the intent and why have it, and I've essentially explained that to you just now. The definition of complete streets, meaning streets that are designed for all types of transportation, cars, autos, pedestrians, bikes, transit. What are some of the benefits of that? And I've hit the highlights of that for you this evening. And we talk about how we're going to apply this and implement it as a policy. And essentially, we're going to be implementing the guidelines that we've developed here on new construction. And then any time you go back and reconstruct a roadway or even do a reservicing, we should take a look at the policies that are in here and see if there's ways that we can make those roadways safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so, those are the main areas that we will be doing, implementation of complete streets policies. We're going to do that by requiring all of these types of projects to go through essentially a staff review process. It's going to provide a double check, if you will, to make sure that that roadway or that corridor or that reengineering of a project is implementing and considering all modes of transportation. So, not just the cars, but pedestrians as well. There are design criteria listed in the document. Rather than reinventing the wheel on that, there is a lot of good standard publications that are out there in the engineering community and the design community that already provide good standards on how to provide safe pedestrian crossings and improved signals. So, we really essentially reference those. The RTA also has a very good document that we assisted in with and looking at ways to integrate transit into new developments. So, if there's, for example, pace service along 59 at some point in time, there's good guidelines that we can look at for that as well. And then there are performance standards in the document as well that look at the levels of improvement and how can we check to make sure that this policy is actually getting implemented. This is a table, and I know the details of it are too small to read, but this is out of the transportation plan. And really, just to highlight the fact that we've already kind of prioritized ways to make our streets safer in Plainfield. And so, we really kind of reference that in these design guidelines. But we've come out with, you know, the things that should be done in the next five years, 10 years. Obviously, a lot of it's dependent on funding, but we do have a good strategy for that. In addition to the overall policy, we did look and develop a matrix of improvements that would constitute improvements that would include complete streets elements. Three domain categories, pedestrian improvements, bicycle improvements, and traffic calming improvements. At least along Meadow Lane, that the focus has really been on the traffic calming elements. Each different type of improvement has different impacts on improving it from a pedestrian standpoint, improving it from a traffic flow standpoint. This matrix summarizes that. It's probably a little bit small to see, but one thing I wanted to point out, too, is that the last column has cost estimates for each of those, which is obviously very important because, you know, obviously, to do some of these is going to cost some money. Now, when we're talking about Meadow Lane, we're talking about doing some things on a more temporary basis to see what's working and monitor that. That initial cost won't be terribly high because we're just going to do it on a temporary basis. But the solutions that we come up with, if they're working, may cost some money. So, for example, if we decide that we ultimately like a traffic circle at a particular location to install that, there's a cost estimate on here to give you an idea in range to the cost of different types of improvements. So, two parts I talked about. One, downtown, probably a little bit simpler, and then we'll get into Meadow Lane, which is a little bit more complex. Downtown Plainfield probably has the best example of complete streets right now in Lockport Street. You've got traffic tables, you've got curb bump outs, you've got a lot of the things that you would do to make that area a safer environment. We simply walk the area to see if we can identify some other things that would be helpful going forward to improve pedestrian access through the area. We've certainly got the River Walk under construction now, and that will certainly help. The new bridge tying together both sides of downtown is certainly a big plus for that. But the things that we noticed most and we heard from residents, we talked to them most, were a couple of things. One, a desire for some additional bike racks, not a lot, but a couple of locations. So, from this map, it's a little bit dark, but there are green, like, symbols with a P on the map that show you where you've got existing bike racks located in the downtown area, primarily along Lockport Street. And then there are some blue Ps where we're suggesting some additional bike racks to serve businesses and residents in the area. Those new ones primarily are right on the corner of Lockport where the new spaghetti place is going in, for lack of a better word. There's space there in the pavement, and we think that would be a good location for additional bike rack. And then down south off of this Plains where you get down there by the front street grill. In fact, if you go by there, most days, you'll see a bike parked right out in front of the establishment, not on a rack, just there. So, but that's a location where there really isn't much. There is one back down on the park, but it's kind of out of the way a little bit. I don't think people see it, so having it on the north side of the street would help. So, we identified those, and then we identified a couple of other improvements, mainly along 59. Obviously, 59 is a significant pedestrian barrier. We've done some things to help enhance that at the intersection of Lockport 59. There are striped pedestrian crossings, and there are pedestrian signals at that location. However, if you go out there and look at it today, most of the paint has already worn off on those pedestrian crosswalks, and it's really not that distinctive a marking. So, we're suggesting ultimately improving that by making pedestrian crossings that are probably a change in color, somewhat similar to what we did, again, downtown on Lockport Street in the pavement to enhance that and to widen the sidewalk ultimately along 59 on the west side there. It's a very narrow section. In fact, let me, when we're out there doing the field work, you're standing next to semi sitting there on the highway, and it's a little spooky, honestly. And so, it's tight. Obviously, that would require working with a private property owner, something that IDOT didn't do when they came in with the improvement. But at least, probably not the entire length, but near that intersection where traffic is backed up, I think widening the walk there would make some sense. The other thing that we identified on 59 was the intersection of Main Street and 59. You can see that they've striped out an island here in the pavement, but it's not raised. It's certainly big enough to be raised. But if you had some type of spot where, you know, maybe you started going across the street and you decide, oh, I'm not going to make it all the way, or there are cars turning when they're not supposed to be turning, or something else, if that could be made into kind of a safety island, it is large enough to accommodate and that instill a lot of pedestrians to move through there. So, that would be a safety improvement that we're suggesting ultimately would be a good thing to work with IDOT to accomplish along 59, to enhance safety of pedestrians in that area. The one other one that we wanted to highlight here, two other ones, actually. Along Main Street, there are some segments that don't have sidewalks. We think that that network should be continued, with the exception of the southern end of it, when you get down closer to Lockport Street or 126, there's a segment there that's not complete. We are not recommending adding additional sidewalk in there today because ultimately, the plan is to take Main Street down and tie it to the south, kind of where that one P is, if you can see it right there, through that existing building. When that happens, that'll be a much safer pedestrian connection. If we provided the sidewalk all the way out to Lockport now, we'd be encouraging people to go on the north side of the bridge, which is not what we want to do. We want them to get on the south side of the bridge. So, we've not suggested that segment, but there are other segments along Main where the sidewalk should be completed. And then the other thing we identified there was, Main Street is still a fairly busy street, and there really is no pedestrian, marked pedestrian crossings anywhere between Lockport and 59. We think a pedestrian crossing in the middle and the area of this Plains would be a good idea. If that crossing were to be installed, it probably should have some signals and some things that identify that as an important pedestrian crossing for the motorists going through that area. But we think that would be a long-term safety improvement that would make some sense in there. Again, that's an IDOT-controlled road, so we'd have to coordinate with them, so that won't be a quick solution. But those are some of the observations that we had downtown. Then regarding Meadow Lane, as I mentioned, we had a public meeting, I think July 8th, with residents in the area. Essentially, what we did, the first part of the meeting was explaining what complete streets were and reviewed a number of different safety improvements that could be made along that roadway. Things from creating bike lanes along the road, traffic calming measures like traffic circles, chicanes, which I'll explain in a minute, striping, and a number of different possibilities. We allowed residents to vote on which ones they thought would be most practical along Meadow Lane, and we got some very clear patterns in that voting. Residents thought, in general, that traffic circles were something that should be explored. Chicanes were a good solution, and curb bump outs were good solutions to that area. There was actually a lot of additional interest in more traffic enforcement out there and that kind of thing as well, but we were looking at more design solutions with this effort. So, those were the three design solutions that came out of the discussion. So, as Michael mentioned, we've spent a number of meetings with the traffic committee, looking at different alternatives and solutions along Meadow Lane, and we've identified a number of places where some of these solutions could potentially be implemented. What we're talking about is doing some type of a temporary solution where we come in with delimeters like, well, if you're up on 135th Street by Jewel, the community has used them or we've used them downtown, where they're essentially plastic poles, if you will, that come up that define a lane, essentially. We're talking about doing that on a temporary basis, trying it out, monitoring it to see what's working and what's not working, and then working closely with the residents to make that happen. I'm going to take it segment by segment because it's a little difficult to see these improvements at that scale. So, starting from the northern end of Batutal Estates, top of the page there is 127th. We identified a couple of locations where we could do different types of improvements. Essentially, when you see the little diamonds there, like just south of Trilly Avenue, those are areas where we talked about doing chicanes, and I'll show you what that is in a second. Then the purple circles are locations where we thought we could do some traffic circles. The red circles are locations where we have an existing four-way stop sign, which is also a type of traffic calming measure. And then the other one that is not on this particular segment, but lane striping is shown by yellow stripes. When we get farther down, particularly in Prairie Knoll, we suggested an area where we could do some striping. So, we've identified a lot of potential locations. We are not recommending that the village go out and do all of these at one time. We think we want to do some trial and are trying to prioritize that. We've actually developed a little survey to ask the residents which ones they think we should start with in terms of our preliminary observation. I gave that to Michael last week. He's intending to send it out, I think, in the near future to residents to help them provide us some input into which ones they think are most valuable. And certainly, we recommend comments from the board in terms of which ones you would like to prioritize as well. So, real quick, I'm moving it down. The top part here is 135th Street. So, we talked about some areas where we could do some striping in Prairie Knoll. We talked about another traffic circle potentially at Madison Street and Meadow Lane, and then one farther south at Thornberry and Dayfield is a potential location. Moving down to Liberty Grove, we've got a couple of locations where we thought we could do some solutions here. Traffic circle potentially at, I guess, what would be Independence Drive and Meadow Lane. And then we thought we could also potentially do some chicanes down farther south. Talking with the traffic safety committee, we learned that the most significant speeding problem along all of Meadow Lane is really between Liberty Grove Boulevard and 126. It's a pretty straight stretch there. You've got homes, at least for a part of it, only on one side, so there's less curb cuts in that area. And there are, they essentially could sit there all day and write tickets, I think, if they chose to. So, that is one of the more dangerous segments. Then when you get farther south along Whispering Creek, there are a lot of residents at our neighborhood meeting there with a strong interest in seeing some traffic calming measures there. The two that we're suggesting along that segment would be a traffic circle at Sandbank Drive, and then some chicanes farther south, essentially midway between Sandbank and Indian Prairie. And I'll show you more specifically where that could work. So, to recap, the main types of improvements we're talking about potentially would be curb bump outs, where we essentially extend the sidewalks out at intersections. So, for example, right now, because of the width of Meadow Lane, which is about 37 feet wide, it is more like 42, 45 feet to walk from curb to curb to cross that street. We could narrow that considerably to about 24 feet wide, which would still be plenty wide enough to get all of your vehicles through there, including emergency vehicles, and tighten that up a little bit to shorten that walk and make it safer for pedestrians. Ultimately, if we were to do it, we would want to actually build real curbs out there, probably add some rig low planting, nothing that would block visibility and things that would be low maintenance out there. And we've suggested some specific plantings that could accommodate that, that would also be sustainable and work from an environmental perspective and beautify the intersection, but also tighten that up from a pedestrian perspective. Initially, what we're talking about is what we kind of see down there in the bottom picture, of putting those little delimeters out at the corner, just to kind of tighten the roadway up on a temporary basis to see if that's doing what we think it's going to do and get residents' reactions. Some of the nice things about curb bump outs are that, one, it doesn't reduce parking along the roadway at all, so it doesn't impact the neighbors in that way, and, two, it enhances the pedestrian safety of the area. So, that is an option we want to explore. Striping is another one that we want to explore. We talked particularly in Prairie Knoll subdivision about this. This is a picture actually down in Shorewood where it's been done on a street not as long as Meadow Lane, but similar in terms of width as Meadow Lane called Verdun. It is essentially, if you know, if you're on 59 and where the target is, the street that kind of connects behind, the south side of Target, going to the west is Verdun. And they've striped it with a center yellow line, continuous lines for parking along the side. And at least in talking to Bexton Women, your local engineer, your community's engineer, they work for Shorewood as well, and they said it's been helpful down there in terms of traffic calming a little bit and slowing the speed along that roadway. So, something like that. Here in Plainfield, we've done it right out here on Van Dyke, something somewhat similar with some of the striping you've done out there to accommodate some of the parking that's going on with the computers and Pace. It's a similar concept. Striping is not terribly expensive. You have to redo it occasionally, but that, just narrowing and painting of the lanes can help improve traffic calming out there. Chicanes are another one that we've talked about. Essentially, this is also narrowing up the roadway, but rather than putting something in the middle of the street, you're putting it on the side of the street. You need to accommodate drainage. This is showing one that narrowed up the street, actually is used to handle some of the drainage and actually adds some filtration to the stormwater management along the roadway, which is a nice concept. Essentially, you would have them on both sides, so you'd have one here, one up here, and probably one up there. So, you're essentially causing some curbing going through the subdivision, which will slow cars down. Downside is that you lose some parking along the street when you're doing that. So, that can be potentially a problem, but if speeding is a real problem in the neighborhood, it can work. Honestly, I live not far off of Meadow Lane, and my observations are that there's really not a lot of on-street parking going on. In fact, if there was more on-street parking, the speed, you probably wouldn't be as big of a problem. But there isn't a lot, except when you've got an event at the school or something like that, or maybe somebody's having a party on the weekend. So, this essentially narrows up the pavement like parking would do in a way that hopefully will make it safer for people going through there. This is just kind of a blow up, showing you the southern end, how we could do this. We identified a number of different spots. I wouldn't do all of them, but I would probably do, you know, opposite sides of the street in a segment. Essentially, it's difficult in a subdivision where you've got a lot of driveways onto the street like we have on Meadow Lane. So, essentially, what we're looking for is segments where we've got homes with driveways that are kind of opposite each other. And there, we've got enough of a gap where we can put a device like this in there and make it work. So, that's kind of showing how that could potentially work in one subdivision along the area where we're doing some potential chicanes. Traffic circles, we've got them in town now, so I think everyone's familiar with this concept, but this is essentially retrofitting the traffic circle in an existing neighborhood where we certainly make sure we have room for vehicles to continue to go around it. But that visual circle at the middle of an intersection does tend to suggest that people would slow down. There's a picture of what it might look like on a temporary basis with the delimeters out there, just to see if it's doing what we think it should be doing.
Can you just clarify something?
Absolutely.
Your map, so you're talking about a traffic circle at Sandbank because your map is showing actually a curb extension instead.
Either one, either solution could work, honestly, but go with what the map says in terms of what the recommendation is.
Okay.
And again, we're proposing to do these on a temporary basis. So, we'll do the temporary one out there, and we'll see if it works. And if it doesn't, we might want to pursue the other alternative. We want to kind of evaluate. The other thing that we've done real quick is we have come in and developed typical planting plans for these. This is a long-term thing because we're not proposing to actually install any real ones right now, but we did want to provide the village with some recommendations in terms of good salt-tolerant, tough plants that we've seen that will work in these kind of environments. We know that the village has had some problems with some of the islands that you've had up in Dayfield and some areas where visibility was a problem that you couldn't see through. So, we wanted to give you a clear indication of some plants that could work in these situations. So, that is my quick summary of where we're at on complete streets. We'd love any input or thoughts that you might have in this process, and I will open the floor back up to you.
Can I ask a quick question? In your initial slide, you mentioned that the complete study had two benefits that caught my eye. One is increase capacity and the other, reducing cost. Could you elaborate because I'm a little skeptical?
Yeah, every solution doesn't do both of those things, okay? Those are the range of different improvements that could happen with a complete streets policy and approach. With traffic calming, we're actually not, obviously, increasing capacity. We're trying to make it safer for pedestrians and probably the opposite of helping to reduce costs or increase capacity there. But there are other traffic safety problems that are complete streets things and would be a part of the policy that could improve traffic flow. So, for example, some suggestions that would work along 59 or Main Street or some of the busier streets could actually improve traffic flow there. Along streets like Meadow, we are trying to slow traffic down and not create more through traffic.
You said reduce cost.
Yes, reduce cost. Reduce cost in a couple of different ways. One, we want to make sure that we're not overbuilding streets. Honestly, in my opinion, Meadow Lane is overbuilt, right? So, we built too much pavement out there to begin with. In the future, we're going to try to build streets that are matched to the actual function and needs, so they might not be as wide. If they're not as wide, it's not going to cost as much to go back and reconstruct it or repave it or those kind of things. So, that is an example of how we could reduce costs with a policy like this.
And I'm sorry, I should identify myself. I'm Bob Case. I'm a resident of Dayfield, not far from Meadow Lane. I was at the meeting on the July 8th. Thank you for inviting us. But two things came up at that meeting that I've not heard mentioned or got kind of short shrift. One is, we were assured that prior to this kind of meeting and being, plans of being presented to the board, that a speed survey would have been done and the results of that presented as part of this presentation. So, that's number one, the speed survey. Second, another thing you mentioned kind of gave short shrift to the idea of more enforcement. And it was brought up at that meeting that in Naperville, as an example, there is citizen monitoring where citizens can be part of a program and are issued radar guns so that as an aid to enforcement in some way, and we were told that that was going to be looked into. going to be looked into. So, I feel like, again, this is getting momentum before the events that we were told would happen have been presented.
Well, to the point of going forward, I can tell you that this is just one of many steps that are going to be going on. There's still a survey that needs to go out to the residents, as was mentioned. There are still a number of different steps. We thought it was very important at this point to let the village board know where we are in that process, that we aren't asking for a vote of the village board to implement a plan or anything to that effect at this time. So, there are a number of different things to go forward. As for the radar gun issue, I'm sure that some other communities might do that. I have to tell you that I would have severe trepidation as the administrator to recommend that to the village board to vote on, only in that there's a lot of training that would have to go involved. There's a lot of different various things that I would expect us to have in place. Heck, we don't even have a volunteer reserve officer program at this point in time. So, I'd feel very cautious about proceeding down that particular path at this point in The other point that, I had a question that I wanted to ask, if you don't mind, with regard to the chicanes as compared to curb extensions. With the chicanes, you still do allow for parking on those gaps within the chicane, correct?
If the gap is long enough, yes. But not always. I mean, sometimes the gap is, particularly along Meadow, we've got situations where there's some good segments where we can do it easily. So, like I talked about, that long stretch in Liberty Grove, between Liberty Grove Boulevard and 126. There, it's long enough that we could certainly have gaps and still accommodate parking. When you get into segments where you've got drive, 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 then it's going to be much more difficult. So, probably what we would do in those scenarios is, you know, do chicane, 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 but shorter ones, and not do it the whole length. So, we might limit parking in that little area, but we'd still have parking on both ends of it.
Mike, Tony Bonjorno. Question, we're on south Meadow Lane. I noticed on your drawing here, you've got the proposed circle, traffic circle?
Actually, it's a curb extension that's planned there.
Sandbank is, on your plan, it's a...
Curb extension.
Yeah, we show on Sandbank, actually, I'm looking at the map, it's on the screen right now, it shows traffic circle on Sandbank, and then south of Sandbank, there's an area where we propose chicanes.
No, it's a curb extension.
Yeah.
This one here is, what I'm looking at here is, it's a traffic circle at Sandbank and Meadow.
Yes.
And what I'd do, my question is, is you have yield signs to be used at all intersections. Right now, that's a four-way stop. Are you saying you would eliminate the stop signs and make it yield signs instead? Because if you're going to put a light at Meadow, I mean, I can't...
That's why I think a curb extension process might be a better idea there.
Yes.
Can't see where that would...
Yeah, originally, we had talked about doing a traffic circle, and you're right, I think the curb extension was because there's a stop sign at that location.
Yeah, because I know that, at least on the south end, there is very, very little parking on the streets. You can go through there daytime.
Yeah.
There's very little parking.
That's right.
And we are staggered. You have a driveway, they're kind of opposite, yet there's sections in between.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A couple of comments, I guess. One of the places we've done traffic calming for a long time is on Pilcher Road. Maybe doing Van Dyke, but Pilcher Road has had one for a long time. One of the key things that made a difference was the installing of chicanes at the start of that by Wood Duck. And that really did force people into two lanes, and then we striped it so that it was kind of a bike lane, a really wide bike lane. When they first put it in, it was, people were going two lanes, and then one on the other side, and it was dangerous, but the people have finally accommodated that. The other thing which was done there is there are six speed bumps. And I noticed no speed bumps listed in your program here. I assume there's a reason for that, but they are effective, not perfect, because some people like to fly over the speed bumps.
There is.
In general, as the chief has said a number of times, they're damaging their car, so maybe they'll stop doing that, so.
Well, and talking with the traffic committee, both the police, and particularly the fire departments, really do not like those. It is a problem for their emergency services. An ambulance going over that is jarring someone in the ambulance, and so there was concerns with those with public safety officials in town, so that's one of the reasons we didn't. Plus, actually, when we met with the residents, the residents weren't particularly keen on those solutions either, so those two reasons combined suggest that we wanted to focus on some other alternatives other than speed bumps.
Yeah, I like the approach that you've taken, and maybe it's probably better. However, the one thing I would add, though, in the past, we've had trouble, and Meadow Lane is one of them, where we've put in some things, thought it was going to be helpful because residents wanted it, and then we ended up taking them out because the residents started screaming at us. And it's nice that we're getting the feedback up front, but I think we need to make sure it's not the village board supporting the changes. We need to have the residents say, "We really want this." And if somebody doesn't like it, we're going to talk to them ourselves, because we want to keep this. So, let's see if we can find a way to take the onus off of us of imposing what's going to be viewed as constrictions. Number of people are not going to be happy. I hope a lot of people are happy, though, so maybe it'll balance out, but I'd rather than not have it come up here, get solved at the resident level first, because we do listen to residents. It's important to us, so.
No, and we have created a survey that can go out to them in a couple days, that will let them prioritize which ones they think are the most important. We did emphasize in our initial meeting that we would probably do some temporary solutions at first to see what was working well and what wasn't working well. And that would assume that we would have another follow-up meeting with them, once we'd had it in place for a while, and get feedback before we would suggest spending any money on permanent solutions to the village board.
Just got a quick question. Regarding particularly Whispering Creek, it seems like most of the problem is traffic coming off Indian Boundary and further southwest or neighborhoods. Was there any thought to just restricting the left turn from Indian Boundary onto Meadow Lane at certain times of the day, or the right turn back on, say from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, the restriction during high-traffic times?
That was one of the solutions we tried and rescinded it, changed it. Restrictive signs from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning or something.
Yeah, I recall something like that, so.
Pardon? I'm not sure.
I think the traffic volume increased so much in that intersection at Indian Boundary and 126 is not designed exactly the best. So, they were having a heck of a time getting units that wanted to go westbound off of Indian Boundary, and I think that was one of the main elements why that was changed back. You got to talk up there, Tony.
We've got three stop signs coming up Indian Boundary from Meadow and Indian Boundary up to 126. You've got, what, I think it's three stop signs. On Meadow Lane itself, between Indian Boundary and 126, you have one stop sign that very few people stop for. I mean, they're flying up that street. It's just the shortest distance to get out, and you're gone.
And I guess my question is, was that prior to Droudon and everything being there? It seems like they're coming from Droudon.
No, this was, Droudon was already going.
Droudon was there.
It was operational when this happened, yes.
Yeah, that was it. But, yeah, at that point, it was working. Like I said, if you said it's increased, we noticed a huge increase in traffic.
Just like Mr. Hoffman said, we're trying to be proactive rather than reactive, and this is a reactive instance, because in my mind, I think some more thought should have been when they developed that street, that it shouldn't have been so straight.
Exactly.
We have Van Dyke Road over here that's got turns and such, and we don't quite have the trouble with speeders over there.
Oh, yeah, the minute you start doing, but you're in a straight shot.
Yeah, so you're more of a straight shot over there, so that, we're being reactive to the situation.
Especially when we're going to be racing to a stoplight, because you can see that coming. If that stoplight's at 126...
But they only have one block to go before, from the stop sign to...
Right, but leading up to that, I see that light in the distance. I'm not telling on myself, since the police are here, but I mean, I would tell you that that's very logical, and that, you know, you don't want to wait for that light, so you know, you see it, and you want to make it, and that's one of the things. I think as the street is so long, even at that point, from, you know, in the Whispering Creek area, that it's so long that there's nothing to stop that, whereas to his point that Indian Boundary's got a couple of stop signs, so it kind of breaks it up a little bit, but there's nothing to stop it. I mean, you know, if they stop at that stop sign, unfortunately, that's not what people do these days. So, let me ask this, so I understand, are we, so after this point, we have this information, the next step for you is to reengage with the residents, to say, "Here's some suggestions, here's some temporary ideas," working with them again, to include them as well?
Yeah, I think what we talked about doing at the traffic committee was, we wanted to identify solutions in all of the neighborhoods along the corridor. We've done that now. So, we want to go back to the residents and ask them which ones they want us to start with first. We're not going to do all of them, there's too many to do all of them, and I think it's more effective to pick out significant ones. We want to make sure that we're doing at least one of the different types of solutions. We've got the curb extensions, the chicanes, and the striping, but we want to go back to the residents, ask them where they would like us to start. We want to make sure that we communicate with the residents before we do this, so that, you know, they know that these temporary measures are going out there and inform them how that works. And we want to monitor how it's functioning, working. And then we'll probably come back to you at that point and say, "Okay, here's what we found out, and here's what it would cost to do some of these things permanently."
Thank you.
And the timeline for that, do you expect, Michael?
I think the timeline regards to reaching out to the residents will be clearly this early autumn, obviously this month in October, by reaching out to not only the residents who signed up for the workshop, but also the presidents. We've been using various associations for all these different developments as kind of a contact, to get the word out, to work with the presidents of the different associations, and the people who basically articulated concerns about this, to reach out to them in the next few weeks. As Michael already outlined, we're also, we'll have a link, a web link, which will basically invite, basically comments, and we also will continue to spread the word via e-news on a weekly basis. We've been getting, we've received over 50 comments, which has been phenomenal feedback about our complete street policy. So, we'll continue that process, too, to get the word out.
Following through on my thought process, if you get some negative comments and post them, that might encourage people who have positive comments to actually show up and post those comments. So, I would maybe somehow in the verbiage, pros and cons, do you like it or do you not like it, or something, so that you end up with people who like it standing up and recognizing that.
We will post it also on our social media, in regards to Facebook, and promote an actual discussion, which we've had. We actually have had some interesting discussions on Facebook about complete streets, which is exactly what you're saying. Point, counterpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Collins. You know what, in defense of the village, the current administration, government of the Village of Plainfield in 2014, and I'm going to make a defensive remark, this, the streets that are in question always are Meadow and Indian Boundary. They were developed when the Village of Plainfield was 4,000 people. It's currently 40,000 people. And you think of the tens of thousands of people who have moved into the greater metropolitan area of Joliet and the Village of Plainfield south, Caton Farm Road in particular I'm talking about. Where are they coming from? They're coming from the south to go north, and we're trying to use streets that were developed in the 1990s and before, perhaps. What we're trying to do is obviously correct the situation, put Band-Aids on very bad problems. And I know, and I've spoken with some of the residents on Meadow, and I've spoken with residents on Indian Boundary, and what we're trying to do is correct the situation that was forced on us simply by demographics. The whole issue is what happened down south, and people, you know, oftentimes, I think, non-residents many times are the individuals who really don't worry about rushing through a neighborhood. Residents are very, in my estimation, oftentimes, very concerned about their own neighborhood. Non-residents who are, and I'm not condemning individuals from way down south, but they're in a hurry to get to Route 55, and the one way to get there is either go up Indian Boundary, Meadow, Droudon, and they're in a hurry to get there, because I've seen it. And do they stop at stop signs? Many times, not. But can we possibly issue a ticket if they don't? Yes, many times, we can. And so, like I'm saying, we're trying to be proactive to a situation that is very negative, and I think the public has to be understanding and listen to what we're trying to apply as we try and listen to what you want. And so, like Trustee Lamb stated, if there's a possibility, come out. If you're positive, say something positive. If you're negative, obviously, you have a right to say something negative. But it's best to be part of the solution and not part of the problem, and work for the betterment of these neighborhoods and these streets. Thank you.
Ready? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is strategic plan update.
Included in your packet and for the community is an update to our community-wide strategic plan. Mr. Persons and Mr. Garrigan have done a yeoman's task of keeping this report up to date. We thought we'd just hit a couple of the highlights and not necessarily go through the entire detail. With that, I think I'll start by turning it over to Mr. Persons, because transportation, I think, is first, isn't it?
Thank you. It's a great theme tonight with the complete streets, and now on to talk about transportation a little bit. When we look at the first item within the village's strategic plan, I actually have some new and exciting news to report tonight for the board and for the public as well. Last week, the Will County Governmental League Transportation Committee had a meeting to talk about future projects within Will County. Now, if we look back a little bit to earlier this spring, there was a call for projects, and what the call for projects means, that any and all communities, entities within Will County can submit a roadway project for STP grant funding. The grant funding is actually federally grant-funded projects that work through the county process. So, it's a competitive process, it really is. So, we did submit, based on the village's transportation plan that was approved by the board, two projects that we felt were very strong contenders for this grant money. One was Renwick Road, the area basically in between the river and Route 59 for improvement, and another was 127th Street in the area from Heggs Road onto Meadow Lane, and that's that unimproved section. And as the board will recall, about a year ago, we had a couple of residents that came with some safety concerns related to that section of roadway. I'm pleased to report that both of the projects qualified and will be included within the grant program. 127th Street, now, keep in mind, the maximum funding is $2 million. 127th Street has been approved for a $2 million grant. Renwick Road has been approved for a 1.49, so approximately $1.5 million grant, and Plainfield within this program will be the second highest as far as number of dollars at $3.5 million, only second to Will County at $4 million. So, we fared very, very well within this second call for projects, and we're proud, and I'm very pleased and proud with Mr. Jessen and Mr. Threwit. They did quite a bit of work to get these submittals together, and it does take the cooperation of the other communities. Keep in mind that, as in this first bullet point, it talks about implementation of plans, regional plans, and working with other communities. The other communities have to agree that these are important projects, too, as well. So, we were able to achieve the buy-in from the other communities, and in essence, bring about $3.5 million of grant money to the village for these needed improvements. To give you an idea, in the past, through the STP program, the villages have received grant money for Droudon Road at $1 million, Steiner Road at $2 million, 127th Street in front of the Edwards Campus at $1.2 million, and Van Dyke Road at $1.5 million. And this is just in the past seven or eight years. This isn't going back 20 years. So, we've been pretty successful at achieving grant money through this resource, and we believe it's important to bring that to the attention, not only of the board, but of the public, too, as well, and it works very well with the first item that's within the strategic plan. So, hats off to the engineering division. They did an outstanding job for the village. When we look on into the plan, we have complete streets, which is one of the items which we covered very, very well. The I-55K... be this month, that is not going to occur at this point, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. There are actually alternatives, viable alternatives that are out there that the consulting firm V3 has invited representatives from each one of the communities to meet with IDOT and to meet with all the environmental regulators in the first week of October and talk about all the viable options for alternatives, make sure that there aren't any fatal flaws. And then, at that point, it'll come back to each one of the boards. The Plainfield Board, Bolingbrook, and Romeoville for discussion in concurrence, too. In February, it'll go back to the NEPA Board. The thought and hope is that there would be some consistency between all the communities on a preferred plan. So that is the thinking behind it, but after the meeting in October, there will be a reassembly of the CAG group again to get citizens' input on the different options before the board gets a presentation, so again, we're seeking that public feedback on the different options related to I-55. So there are some good things that they're moving along with that, too, as well. 30 and I-55, we can see there hasn't been a tremendous amount of construction that's going on, but it is currently under construction. This is funded by IDOT 100%. In the past, we, we did have an agreement to fund a portion of these improvements, but the entire interchange improvement will be funded by IDOT at approximately $2.6 million, and the anticipated completion schedule is still December of 2014. 143rd Street is still in IDOT's hands as, as far as review, and we'll report back to the board in the near future related to that. And as we move forward to the Lockport Street calming, we do have a design for the mast arm and the signage, which we will bring back to the board before that project is bid. We hope that'll be before the board shortly here, and so we can discuss that, too, as well. And I know I moved very quickly, and before I turn it over to Michael, I'll just talk a little bit about the riverfront. As the board's fully aware and our citizens are aware, there's been quite a bit of activity on the riverfront property. The pathway has been installed. Deconstruction actually started, returned to work, and they're removing a lot of the material, in that it did hit a couple of the targets that were within the strategic plan. One was to get the pathway system installed. The other was to remove some of the debris that's down there, too, and as part of this project, part of that debris has been removed and will be removed. We still have to continue to work with our local representatives to get the rest of the material removed. But I've got some good news related to the bridge as well. It's just about ready to go out to bid, so the pedestrian bridge, we believe that the construction will start this fall, be completed next summer, and you'll actually have an interconnection from where the path currently ends on the south side and a crossing over the road and a crossing of River Road, and probably a need for some complete streets, traffic calming at that location to notify people that we will have pedestrians at that location, too, as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about transportation in general before I turn it over to Mr. Garrigan. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, with respect to our update of the strategic plan, there are two matters I wanted to discuss very briefly. Pursued to the board's direction, staff did incorporate a new action item, specifically to create a new design for the War Memorial Plaza at Sellers Park. As you recall, a month ago, the village board basically gave positive feedback to a veterans' group as it relates to the Freedom Tribute Memorial, specifically for the relocation of that tribute memorial from the central Plainfield High School to Sellers Park. Pursued to that direction, staff has added a new action item, and now it's basically internally, has set up an internal committee to come up with a new plan for the relocation of several memorials to the Sellers Park. As you know, long-term plans, we want to relocate the War Memorial, which is currently located in Route 59 Oak Street, to Sellers Park, so staff is currently working internally on coming up with a new plan for that relocation, in addition for a new site for the Freedom Tribute Memorial. So we wanted to basically at least bring that matter to the board's attention, that's a new action item. Staff is basically currently working internally on a plan. We hopefully will bring a, a future conceptual plan of the relocation of these memorials to the village board at a future date for future consideration. The second matter, which I wanted to bring to your attention, is pursued to signage. As you know, one of the major parts we're trying to do is design a unified design for new signage throughout the village as it relates to wayfinding signage, gateway signage. We did advise the board that some further date, future date, based on your input, we would bring back a conceptual, some conceptual concept plans. We've been working with basically Plainfield signs and some different concepts, so this is, I apologize, this was not in your packet, but this is something that we received actually today, and just again, conceptually, one of the things that's important that we identified is incorporating some historic Route 66 signage along Route 59 or the old Route 66 in a way to basically celebrate our legacy of Route 66 signage. So one of the things we've been working on internally is some conceptual signage for the Route 66 legacy, to again, be installed along 59, the old Route 66. These are a couple conceptual signs for the old Route 66 celebratory legacy that we wanted to basically run by the village board this evening. The other two signs that you see on your right side are, one would be a wayfinding signage, which will be located in major intersections, which would basically identify the village hall, the post office, major civic uses in the village itself, and also we're talking about potentially replacing our existing signage for the village of Plainfield. As you know, we have a number of population signs. We've designed a new sign generally, so we're looking for some very brief feedback from the village board, conceptually, on this conceptual unified signage for Route 66 and wayfinding pursuant to the strategic, strategic plan.
You looking for comments now?
If that's your, your desire.
As board members are fond of telling, I'm old enough to remember going down 66 to the west coast, so the white sign is the one that is always there. I've never saw a black one, so-
Right.
I'd at least be historically correct with that.
Part of the reason-
I'd say that was the Oregon Trail, wasn't it?
I was real young at the time, though, but anyway, as far as the welcome sign, I think the blue and white works better. I'm personally not fond of the black background on either one of the two that are there.
I think one of the recommendations to staff, looking at this for the first time, is that we actually have a unified color, the dark, dark, dark blue, or I think it's purple, actually, I forgot the actual name of our color, that that be unified, that we use that on a unified basis. So I, you know, staff concurs, that it should be a unified blue.
Since around signs, let me just make a comment I've made sometimes before. There are a bunch of LED signs that are going up in communities around here. Bolingbrook's got two new ones, you know, it's very colorful, they're small, not too obtrusive, but they are highly visible. And I already have the big sign on 59 that we can use for some things, but let's consider livening up some other things, too. The static signs are, are good, too, for the kind of purposes you're looking at here, but the colorful signs do draw attention to Plainfield, and we are trying to make this a destination for people, so let people know we're here.
There are, you're absolutely right, that is one of the things that we talked about during the strategic planning sessions as well. There are two locations that we're kind of exploring right now, but it's very early, and, and one of those, we actually are looking to partner up with the library as a possible location, so actually, the library's taking the lead on that, and then, and so there are some conversations in that particular regard, and I probably just stole that from Michael's presentation later on tonight, but-
No, that's fine.
That's great, thank you.
As well, I think we're still 39,000?
I think we are.
581.
Yeah, exactly.
Based on last census, we're still 39,000. One of the also, something we identified is there's a potential to basically streamline some signage. You know, you can basically have too much signage, so there may be some opportunities to look at existing signage in our downtown and perhaps streamline some of that. We want wayfinding signage, but we don't want too much signage, you know, that kind of defeats the purpose. So one of the things that staff is currently working on is basically identifying the appropriate locations. Typically, we've identified Wall and Drive in 126, Van Dyke in 126, potentially somewhere on 59, Lockport Street as appropriate locations for the wayfinding sign or the sign which will be on your far right, identifying ports and civic locations. Obviously, the, the village's population sign would be located at the entrances or major intersections like 119th Street, 127th, Renwick Road.
Sounds good.
As far as the design of the signs go, are there any thoughts? Actually, I think they did a really good job at taking the feedback from our last meeting and discussion on this and coming up with some rather creative ideas, so I thought it went well, but I just want to make sure you're comfortable with the image and feel, other than, yeah, we'll go with the, yeah.
Unified color of what we use, and also, the good news is there's a, there's a potential grant from the IDOT, which would help subsidize the payment for these signs, any sign that would be located on the state route potentially, we have an opportunity to seek a grant for that, so that would help subsidize these wayfinding signs and the Route 66 legacy signs, which is a good thing.
Now, is the directional signs going to be made of wood to match the welcomes?
That's correct. They won't be sandblasted, they'll be very similar to the village's, if you know, the downtown district, historic district signs, that's a, that's a wood sign, they'd be very similar to the same material. It wouldn't be a sandblasted sign, per se.
Well, one, I don't know if this is even appropriate time for it, but I brought up truck route signs at 143rd Street. I think that that's a definite need that I've expressed before, because some of these rascals will actually turn if they see another sign that says "truck route." It gives it away, you know, so if we could get some signs over there at 143rd and Route 30, maybe we can instill some education in some of these drivers.
And that's, that's all we really have for as it relates to wayfinding signage and gateway signs. As Mr. Murphy identified, we're working with the Plainfield Library for a new library, potentially village gateway sign on, at the village's parking lot on Route 59, which would give some better visibility for the library and also some opportunities for promoting village events itself as it relates to signage. We're in a very preliminary discussion, thinking about a new potential redesign of the sign, and it's been articulated about some concerns of our existing gateway sign at the Walgreens property. I noticed there's been some expressed unhappiness with the design of that sign, so staff is in a very preliminary basis, thinking about a new redesign of that, of that gateway signage itself. So that concludes basically anything relating to signage, which really summarizes everything, all the updates as it relates to the strategic plan from, from planning's perspective.
If there are any other questions? No? Okay. We will have these updates placed onto the website, along with the updates to our, well, it's really not a dashboard, but I call it a dashboard, that is on our website, and those will be in place hopefully before the end of the week. Thank you.
Reminders?
Coffee with Mayor September the 10th. HBC meeting on the 11th has been canceled. September 15th is the next village board meeting. The 16th will be the next planning commission meeting, and the 22nd will be our next committee of the whole.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.